Gentlemen, I just wanna, and ladies, I just wanna make sure you know we are live and we're not live, but this is being recorded. So we're going to get started to be mindful of the counselor's time. First of all, I wanna say that I appreciate Senator Welch, as well as Senator Lester, for joining us on this city council update. We wanted to make sure that we had a conversation with you all about the work that you're doing as it relates to COVID-19. I know there are some other counselors who have put forth some letters that, in my opinion, were state-level in nature, and I think one thing that would be helpful is to make sure that we are having a dialogue to see how we can support one another. And in order to do that, we need to know that what the work you're doing, and that I imagine that you need to know some of the concerns that we have at the local level. So with that being said, we also are joined by a contingency of folks from the media. I did see, I believe, Mike Dobbs on the line, as well as Peter Goonan and Paul Tuthill. So we appreciate you for joining us. I also have just submitted my colleague Mike Fenton, who's here on the count, from the council standpoint, as well as Counselor Ramos, Counselor Leonard, Counselor Brown, Counselor Allen, and Counselor Walsh. So I appreciate all of you for joining us. The format for this is going to be fairly simple. We're gonna give each of the senators five to 10 minutes max, just to kind of present to us what it is that they're doing on the state level. And then we will open it up for questions. The first round of questions will be just how we normally do. We'll go in order, and then, once everybody has had an opportunity to ask one question, if you haven't, of the senators, then we'll open it up for folks to raise their hand and ask additional questions. Is everybody good? Senators, are we good?
All set.
All right, sounds good. So again, thank you for coming, and we'll get started with Senator Welch, followed by Senator Lester.
It's good to see everybody. I know it's, I know you guys are, have experience doing these conference calls or these virtual meetings. I've seen you on social media and whatnot, so I appreciate you pulling one together for both Senator Lester and I to give an update. And as you can imagine, there's, there's quite a bit going on. I tried to pull out a few things that are, one, that's Springfield-specific, sort of, or not sort of, is Springfield specific? And then, some other of the larger issues that I think we're facing on the state level that obviously impacts Springfield and the surrounding communities as well. So first, we do have a home role petition, as you are aware. The Act authorizing the city of Springfield to convert the use of parkland at DeBerry Park for DeBerry and Homer Street Elementary School. So that is all teed up and ready to go. The issue, obviously, with legislation that involves land transfer, land, land issues on the municipal level do require a roll call, you know, on the state level. So that's teed up, ready to go when we do have our formal session. We don't, and I'm actually, and Eric is too, we're actually on a virtual caucus right now with our, with our colleagues, and I haven't heard whether or not the Senate President has updated us on a, on a date for our upcoming formal session. But when that happens, we'll certainly update you, and that piece of legislation should be, should be passed, or maybe we figure out a way to vote virtually, which, which would be helpful as well. So that, that should be, you know, like I said, all teed up, ready to go, and we should have that completed as soon as we have an actual formal session. In terms of the PPE process, DPH is handling distribution of PPEs to hospitals. As we know, we've probably all read and participated in some way, shape, or form, helping our local hospitals acquire PPE. And it's like the wild, wild west out there. There are some unique situations that are coming up, and there are some, some interesting stories that have come out in terms of what hospitals have had to do on their own to try and secure PPE for their employees. You know, and how that is working with the federal government has really been a challenge for not only states, but for, you know, but for municipalities and local hospitals as well. So, so there was a recent story about Bay State. It looks like it's gotten some, some national attention about how the FBI tried to kind of, I guess, get involved in a shipment of PPE that involved Bay State. And, but nonetheless, Bay State was able to just secure that, that shipment, and they are in a better situation than they were before. If the city requires, and we've been working with the administration, with Mayor Sarno, and we had a conference call with him, I don't know if it was Thursday or Friday, Eric, but with the state delegation, and had talked previously with his cabinet as well, you know, to ensure, and I think the offer obviously will go out to you guys as well, if there is an issue on the state, I mean, on the municipality level that involves, you know, a state issue, whether it's PPE, something through MEMA, DPH, you name it, please give us a call, let us know how we can be helpful. Our information is obviously readily available. I think I'll let Eric touch on the unemployment insurance, unemployment assistance program. He's been working very hard on the state level with Senator Pat Jalen to organize the issues that we are seeing from our constituents and hearing from our constituents. Quite frankly, I would say 85% of the constituent contacts that have come through our office have been unemployment issues, meaning people are having trouble applying for it, you know, either through, you know, online, or they're waiting for their, their application to be approved. We do have a very good direct line to DUA here at the state, with the state, that all senators have the ability to communicate and pretty directly with unemployment. So if there are issues that you know of, please have us, have people get in contact with us. Like I said, I would say 85 to 90% of our, of our constituent cases, and at least through our office, have been, you know, people needing assistance with unemployment assistance. So moving on, the healthcare civil liability bill. I was proud to be able to participate and have that piece of legislation moved through Financial Services Committee, which, which I chair, and we were able to get that bill passed very quickly through the committee, both passed in the Senate and in the House, and the governor signed it. Why that is very, legislation is important. It provides protection for, for people who are providing healthcare services outside of a traditional hospital setting. So as we all know, there have been field hospitals set up, there are testing sites that are set up that are outside the four walls of a hospital. And the way that the law basically is written regarding liability, healthcare workers, doctors, nurses, you name it, did not have protection, did not have protection outside of the four walls of the hospital. So we had to move very quickly and pass that legislation, because obviously, we're asking our healthcare workers to do so much. You know, they're reporting to work every single day, you know, I hate to say it, but, you know, in, not necessarily in regard of their own health. They're, they're, they're there, you know, sacrificing their own health to help others. And I think the last thing that we would want is to have some sort of loophole or glitch in place that would be hanging over their head in case they were providing service in a, in a field hospital setting or something along those lines. So we were able to get that passed. That was very much appreciated by, obviously, all frontline workers and all healthcare workers, and of course, all the hospitals that are, that are dealing with the COVID-19 patients. The other thing, and I'll just touch on it, because Eric, I want to leave some, some things for you as well. But the big thing is, we passed the housing bill, which provides protection in moratoriums on evictions and foreclosures during the COVID-19 pandemic. The moratorium lasts for 120 days, or until 45 days after the governor declares, or lifts the, lifts the state of emergency here in Massachusetts. Basically, it prohibits nonessential evictions for residential dwelling units and small businesses. And it also prohibits landlords from imposing a late fee for nonpayment or rent or residential dwelling units and small business premises, premises units, as long as they demonstrate that their inability to pay during the crisis is due to the COVID-19, which I think, for most people, that's a pretty easy case to make, since we're all pretty much affected by COVID-19. I don't think there's any, but, you know, I don't think anybody could say that they're not affected by COVID-19, unfortunately, at this point. So that was very big, that we moved that through as well. And I think that was, obviously, one of the most important things that we can do from, on a state level that impacts, you know, your everyday working person, that, you know, most people live paycheck to paycheck. We all, you know, know what it's like to have to pay, you know, mortgage, rent, insurance, you name it. And when there's no money or not as much money coming in, and it's due to the pandemic, that's certainly no fault of anybody's personally. So it was important for us to pass that, which we did, and it gives good protections to our constituents throughout the state, actually. But it's very important, obviously, in western Massachusetts, to ensure that nobody's getting removed from their home, nobody's getting removed from, from where they live because of a result of financial issues because of the COVID-19. So, so that was something that, that we all worked on very hard and very quickly, tried to move it as quickly as we could, but ultimately, we did get it, get it finalized, which I think was a big relief to a lot of people out there. And as I stated before, just lots and lots of constituent cases that are coming through. Many, as I said, a vast majority of them are unemployment assistance questions that we're trying to help people navigate through. Of course, there's a myriad of other issues as well, but I'm just tagging that as, because it's overwhelmingly, you know, the most, most contacts that we're getting is, you know, as you can imagine, with so many people on furlough, or so many people that are, that are unfortunately been laid off through this crisis, that, that many people are seeking unemployment assistance for the first time in their lives in many cases, and it's, it's not the easiest thing for people to navigate through that process. So we're trying to help people and, you know, not necessarily hold their hands, but basically, try and navigate, help them navigate through that process so they can at least get that done, so they don't have to worry about, you know, some sort of application and how long it's gonna take to get that approved. So, but there's, there's so many issues. As you know, I'm sure you're getting contacts from, from your constituents as well. But I think, you know, that was, you know, three or four of the things that I wanted to at least point out in the, in the, right now for this meeting, and then obviously, happy to answer any questions. But I wanted to, to turn it over to, if it's all right, whether you said a president, I'm a senator president. I'm giving your, giving your, giving your raise, maybe someday, you never know.
I'll take the upgrade. Before we entertain any questions, I'm gonna have Senator Lester, Senator Lester present as well, but I also want to acknowledge that we are joined by Counselor Gomez, who I neglected to mention the first time. We're also joined by Counselor Williams, Counselor Whitfield, and Counselor Curran. So kudos to my colleagues. I think we have the entire city council on this call. So thank you so much for your interest in being a part of this meeting. Oops, Senator Lester, it's all yours.
Ready? Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So first, thank you, and thank, thank you, Mr. President, for putting this together. We appreciate it, and thank you, Senator Welch. And I think I speak for all of us when saying that we are all in this together. So please don't hesitate to reach out to me or to Senator Welch, both of us, either of us, really, at any time. I think you all have my cell phone number, but, you know, please reach out. And as Jim pointed out, we have a lot of cases around unemployment insurance, a lot, anything really touching state government, if we can be a resource, if we can be helpful, you know, please, please reach out to us. So just to kind of build off of what Senator Welch just touched upon, and I want to make sure we have enough time for a good Q and A, but I want to just quickly run over just some top-level things that we're seeing, both for the state as a whole, but also specifically for Springfield and Hampden County, and then talk a little bit about some, some specific policy items that I've been working on, and that Senator Welch and I have been working on, and then we'll take questions. So first, you know, I do think it's very important for the public to appreciate that Massachusetts right now is one of the hardest-hit states. We are number three in terms of total number of COVID cases. That's behind New York and New Jersey only. We're ahead of much bigger states. We're ahead of California, we're ahead of Florida, Michigan in terms of total number of confirmed COVID cases. Our per capita rate on almost every metric is among the top five. And I think unfortunately, in western Mass, and in particular in Springfield, we are seeing very, very high numbers, which are, you know, arguably among the highest in the whole country. Hampden County, on a county level, has one of the highest per capita rates in the country, and there's a lot of reasons for that, and we should probably talk about that. But I think it's important for the public and for people listening to this to appreciate that it is still a very, frankly, dangerous situation, and people should really do everything they can to stay indoors or to wear face coverings when they're outdoors. Obviously, there's a lot of members of our community who can't do that. They either don't have housing security, or they have jobs that require them to be out in the public, and we've got to be mindful of that, make sure that we're incorporating that into, into all of our response efforts. As Senator Welch pointed out, we did pass, and it is now law, the governor signed the eviction and foreclosure bill yesterday. So that now is state law, and we're gonna work to implement that with, with all of you and with our community partners. We are about to get done some pretty important unemployment insurance expansions on a state level. And I know there's been a lot of questions around unemployment insurance, but the House just passed a version of the Senate's unemployment insurance expansion that are pretty close, and our hope is, is hopefully by next week, that will be on the governor's desk as well, which will provide some relief. I'm a member of a, of a Senate task force that is being chaired by Joe Comerford, our neighbor in Northampton, who's our Public Health Chair. And there's about eight or nine senators on that task force who touch various elements of the state response. So there's a person focused on the hospital health and hospital system, there's a person focused on the supply chain issues, there's a person focused on first responder community, a person focused on the federal-state relationship. And I'm on there to focus on the economic response. And as part of that economic response, we then have a kind of subgroup that meets. We do three meetings a week, and Jim, Senator Welch, is with us on that as the Financial Services Chair of the senators that touch economic policy. So our Small Business Chair is on that, our Consumer Protection Chair is on that meeting, our Tourism and Arts and Cultural Development Chair is on that meeting, myself, I chair it. And then, of course, Senator Welch is a participant with Financial Services, and that's been allowing us to coordinate the economic policy response to the crisis as well. Because I think I speak for all of us when we say that we've got two issues here. We have a health crisis, and then we also have a very urgent economic crisis that's followed the health crisis. A couple of, a couple of things that I know are kind of important, especially for this group, is aid for cities. We actually have a call, Senator Welch and I have a call, the senators are doing a call with Senator Markey and Senator Warren this afternoon, where we're gonna talk about enhanced kind of federal support for the states, which would obviously be relevant for Springfield and for municipal finances as well. So that's a major, major priority. We need more help for the federal government in terms of balancing finances. We're also working on an initiative with Senator Collins, a colleague of ours in Boston, around allowing SNAP to cover delivery, as well as curbside pickup, and streamlining and speeding that approval process up, which is something we've gotten a lot of, a lot of feedback on. We also have a website that we've set up. It's for people who are listening, it's senatorlesser.com/covid19. Again, senatorlesser.com/covid19, where we've tried to put all of the different programs that are out there, state level, federal level, local level, into one place for people, so that they can try to access as much as they can in one place. So there's quite a lot happening. I think it'll probably be most helpful, Mr. President, to kind of pivot as quickly as possible to questions. But we have a lot of active work streams. I will point out, on the PPE item, and this has been relevant for Bay State and for Mercy, the state has stood up a manufacturing emergency response team. It's called M E R T. We frankly can't rely on the federal government for PPE supplies. They've only given about 17% of the total requests that the state has made. So something that we've done in Massachusetts is we're trying to turn over a lot of our local businesses and their production lines to start making PPE for our, for our first responders, for our healthcare workers, our frontline workers. And we got $10 million through both Mass Development and Mass Life Sciences Center and a few other agencies, $10 million incentive program to have companies turn their lines over. So for example, New Balance in Lawrence is now making face masks. There's a textile company in Fall River that is now the single largest gown manufacturer in the entire country. Universal Plastics, based in Hollyoke, many, many of us know that company, is now making plastic face shields. I know they gave a delivery to BHN, and also to CHD for their frontline healthcare workers. So we're turning these local businesses over to help them make, make this material that can then be used by us locally, which is very important, because it's bringing the supply line closer to our community, and it's frankly making us more self, felt self-reliant, rather than having to rely on aid from the Fed. So that's ongoing and in progress. And on the issue of nursing homes and assisted living centers, I know this has been a very big concern. The National Guard now has mobile testing units that they're dispatching. You know, they were recently at Reed's Landing, and they're, they're visiting sites around the state and around Springfield. If you have an issue, or you have constituents that are contacting you with issues at nursing homes or senior living facilities, obviously, if it's urgent, call 911, call for emergency help. But if you need help navigating the state DPH, or the various state levels of, of help, contact myself or contact, you know, Senator Welch or both of us, depending on where, where the home is located, where the facility is located, and we can get you connected to the state-level DPH triage and command center. So with that, yeah, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. President. We can take questions.
Thank you, Senator Lester. So I will turn it over to my colleagues. If we could be very brief with a comment, suggestion, or constituent concern that you have, followed by a question, it would be greatly appreciated. We have all 13 of us on the call, so I'd imagine that everybody wants to ask at least one question. And if you could also direct who that question is for, it would be greatly appreciated. And I'll start in the order that I have on my sheet, and it will start with Counselor Allen, followed by Counselor Gomez. And if you don't have a question, that's fine, too.
Can you imagine someone without a question?
Thanks for the update from both of you and for the state's work. What would you say the biggest frustration, or the biggest issue is that, that we're unsuccessful at so far?
And senators, if you could just limit your responses. That sounds like a question that might be directed at both of you, so if you could take 30 seconds, followed by Senator Welch, that would be great.
This guy cracks the whip.
Good leader.
Jim, do you wanna go, you wanna go first, or?
I think he recognized you first.
I already did, oh, sorry. I'll be very simple, brief, testing. I think right now, in the short term, the single biggest challenge we have is getting the testing dramatically ramped up and getting it to all the communities that need it. Quite frankly, all the other things, in many respects, are downstream from testing. If we don't have a good handle on where the epidemic is, where it's spreading, it's hard to appropriately triage and get PPE resources. It's hard to reopen the economy where we could, so.
Okay.
The biggest frustration is testing.
Okay, thanks.
Senator Welch?
Sure, and I would, I would just follow up with, I think in the beginning of this process, it was, it was the PPE and the, the, you know, the, are we gonna have enough ventilators? Are we gonna have enough space in our hospitals? So right now, obviously, we're going through the surge, or, I don't want to say we're peaking, because I'm not qualified to say that, but the PPE in the beginning, and now it's testing. We had a conversation with Mayor Sarno and his cabinet last week, and talked about how we can maybe, you know, bring some state resources in to get some testing machines actually into Springfield that can go into some of the more dramatically affected communities, as we've all seen, our African-American and our Latino communities are being affected disproportionately because of underlying health disparities that are, that have existed for, fortunately, for forever. So I think that right now, testing, be able to target areas, be able to, to find out exactly what areas are hotspots, and then be able to move to others. So I would, I would say those two issues.
Thank you, Senator Welch.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Allen, Counselor Gomez, followed by Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Senator Welch and Senator Lester for taking the time to speak into the body. My question is particular to the bill that was signed yesterday by Governor Baker. I, both of you guys spoke a little bit about Intuit. It's more specific on if there's any other phases, because outside of the protections for landlords and renters, what about those individuals that kind of don't see it through that scope? Is there any plan or legislative plan down the line for, one, land order, landowners of these commercial real estate property and also residential? Because I know there's a couple constituents that have emailed me pertaining to that bill specifically. I know that there's, it's only a moratorium, 120 days. But is there something down the line that maybe that's happening that we're not aware of, so we can better serve our constituency with a little bit more information? Is there some, my specific question is, is there something down the pipe for, that we don't know about legislatively that's happening for like that next phase of those individuals that are the landowners or the, the, the property owners of those places where they're looking for, you know, something to transpire? Like if they're waiting for an eviction, right, and they're in the process? Like those folks that are, you know, own a couple properties, and, you know, some of them can, can wait a little while, but essentially, you know, that, that's like our next, the next big question now after this, tenants' rights, but then after that tenant's rights, and that's it for right now.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Either Counselor Welch or Counselor Lester, do either one of you want to tackle that?
I'm happy to, to try first, Eric. I, I think what I gathered was, you're talking about like commercial rental space for business, small business owners? Or are you talking more landlords?
It's both, it's both, it's both.
Okay. Well, I do believe, you know, and Eric, you can hopefully back me up on this as well, is, you know, the commercial space, you know, that is covered in, you know, for small business owners is part of what we pass. So they, you know, they should never, a person who runs a small business who obviously can't be paying the rent to their landlord right now should not, will not be evicted because of anything related to COVID-19, which, as we said before, was, was pretty much everybody and everything at this point. So, and then, I think, I don't know, Eric, was, was the second, the second part of the question was about what, what relief there is for landlords to help them make their.
Yes.
Basically, because they're not getting income from their tenants. I believe they go by the same, same rules as, as a tenant would or a homeowner would, where you have the forbearance of the mortgage, and you can tack that on or put that on to the, to the end of your mortgage payment. But in terms of specific financing or money, you know, there are a lot of different things out there, especially through the federal government, that. especially through the federal government that, you know, people qualify for. But I'm not sure if on the state level, if we specifically identified landlords. Eric, I don't know if you can touch on that a little bit?
No, I mean, you basically covered it. I would just add just two, two things on the landlord piece. First, we appreciate the sort of downstream consequences of this, right? So if landlords aren't collecting rent, especially if they're local, they're local small businesses often themselves. So that creates a cash flow issue for them, you know, creates, can create more problems down the line. So it's definitely been recognized as an issue. Senator Welch is exactly right. The federal small business programs, the federal both pandemic unemployment assistance and also the federal paycheck protection program and the federal disaster loan program are available for, depending on how they're set up, if they're an LLC or an S corp, those landlords can get help through those programs. Also, the forbearance points that Jim brought up. And Senator Welch has been very active on the Financial Services Committee and working with Division of Insurance and with the mortgage regulators to make sure that banks are basically being lenient with people. And that would include landlords during the period. And the final thing I would just say is this has to be viewed, I think, the bill that was signed yesterday has to be viewed as sort of the first inning of this. And I think everybody agrees that this is step one. It's going to be a multi-step process of getting people help, protecting the small business community. And so, yes, there's already work on what a phase two, a phase three, a phase four will look like. We felt that the most urgent issue was avoiding, frankly, people getting thrown out onto the street in the middle of any, anytime, but certainly in the middle of a public health crisis was not something that could happen. So there was an urgent rush to make sure that tenants are protected. And then there will now have to be work done to make sure that small business owners and landlords get some protection as well.
Thank you, Senator Lester. We have Counselor Williams, followed by Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, senators, for joining the call. The question I have, and Senator Welch, you alluded to it when you were speaking, about how COVID is disproportionately affecting African American and Latino communities. Kind of framed in the context of, you know, medical supplies being rationed based on best health, essentially. And I just was wondering, is there any legislation or protections in place for, to kind of prohibit that from happening? Where folks who do contract COVID could also have diabetes or what have you, other issues, medical issues that they've been dealing with all their lives? So I just was wondering that.
Yeah, very good question and one that's right on the tip of our tongue. And actually, I think both Eric and I unfortunately hopped off our caucus right before one of the new initiatives with the House and the Senate was going to be for us in our caucus that would focus on the standards of care issue. That is a huge issue. You know, I'm, you know, I think we're all obviously hopeful that we don't even have to get to that issue. But if we do, certainly the way the standards of care have been defined and as to who would say, quote unquote, get a ventilator above somebody else, it, you know, part of the grading process is, you know, the underlying health issues that a person has. And as we know, diabetes, asthma, you know, there's other respiratory issues that disproportionately affect, you know, our minority communities. And that was brought up actually in the legislation that we, we were going to potentially tack that on to the legislation that provided the liability protection for the healthcare frontline workers. But because it was so urgent that we had to do it as quick as possible, we decided to take two paths. One, do that piece of legislation and now set another course that will deal with and pay that much more attention to the standards of care definitions, basically. So to ensure that any segment of the population is not being mistreated in that case. And I will say too, obviously, that affects, you know, our senior population as well because many people in our senior population have underlying health issues as well. So, you know, there, it is relatively, of course, controversial. But at the same time, I think everybody is starting to get on the same page that, you know, it's the most drastic thing we can think of, right? Two people, one ventilator, who gets it? And I'm hopeful that we do not get to that, and I think we all are, that we get, don't get to that scenario. But we do have something now in the works to address that. So, you know, bring that to the forefront. Because when the governor and the administration announced that standards of care, you know, anybody who's spent any time in healthcare policy, data collection, whatever, could, you know, know immediately, you know, there's certain segments of our population that are affected far more with these underlying issues than others. So it sent up a serious red flag, but a red flag, I think that fortunately now is being addressed.
Thank you, Senator Welch. Senator Lester, do you have anything that you want to add to that quickly?
Just adding, I mean, just backing up what Senator Welch said. And I'm grateful that you brought the point up, Counselor Williams, because we need data and we've really pushed the administration to be transparent about the data that's getting collected from the various hospitals and healthcare providers so that we can, you know, that we can get the resources and start having a policy response that matches the data. And just to Jim's point, that's going to change, that those standards of care were issued by the governor. There was a lot of track. They've assured us that it's going to get reevaluated. In fact, we are literally on a call, simultaneous call to this, where this topic was going to, was going to come up. So my hope is we'll probably have updated guidance by the end of the week. And again, the goal needs to be though, just as Jim said, that we never face a situation where there would have to be that kind of rationing. But nonetheless, the standards have to change and they will change.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Williams. Counselor Walsh, followed by Counselor Whitfield.
Oh, well, thank you, senators, for joining us today and hello to all my colleagues. And I think Marcus, you and Malo, when for having the nicest background there. It's really cool. But one issue that I think is near and dear to all of us on this call and this panel is voting. Voting certainly has dramatically changed with the COVID-19. And some of us on the council, you know, Counselor Gomez leading. Matter of fact, all of us that went to Denver that could see this in action are very interested in changing the way people vote and having people vote by mail. And also, I'm wondering about getting signatures. I think it's almost unrealistic to expect that people can get the number of signatures they need to be on the ballot. So any input into support of those initiatives or any changes that will make it easier to be on the ballot and for people to vote?
I can, I can take that one, yeah. So Counselor Walsh, you're right, completely agree on signatures. People probably saw the S J C declared actually the current status, given the health epidemic unconstitutional and cut in half across the board, the number of signatures. Senator Welch and I were supportive of a Senate effort that was actually before the S J C decision to cut the number by half. That wasn't successful legislatively, but no, I think we felt that was important. Nonetheless, it's now law, the S J C already said that. I do think this brings up an urgent, urgent issue with the fall election, which is we need, I personally feel strongly that we need universal no-fall absentee ballots and we need a vote by mail system. Certainly, if people want to vote in person, they can and they should. But this, frankly, this is something that should have been known a while ago, but now is very urgent. There are several bills pending in the legislature, probably about a half dozen, maybe more, that touch this issue in various forms. But I personally feel strongly that we need a really universal option for people to vote by mail. Many states do this already, you know, it's not the follow moon launch here, what's trying to be done. But ballot access is going to be a big deal. And I would just point out, you know, I think we all saw what happened in Wisconsin. We don't want that in Massachusetts. We don't want a situation in Massachusetts like you saw in Wisconsin. And just for more comparison, South Korea just had national elections for their, for their president and for their parliament, you know, similar to what our November elections would be. And they had actually record turnout because they kept people safe. They, they did mail options, they did in-person options for the in-person options. They gave people gloves, they spaced everybody out, they had resources for people to make it safe. So there's a lot of models for us to look at, both around the world and in other states. And we need to be proactive on it.
Thank you, Senator Lester. Senator Welch, did you have anything that you would like to add to that?
I would just, you know, ditto for me in terms of, you know, supporting, you know, what it'll ultimately look like. I think it'll probably be a myriad of things, whether it be expanded, you know, absentee ballot, voting by mail, or as Eric suggested, you know, extend early voting timeframes. You know, I think all of those scenarios will and should be on the table. But we're quickly running out of time to deal and to be addressed. But as much as, you know, the Senate addressed the signature issue that in the House unfortunately didn't take it up and the S J C ruled on it. And I think that's actually, for us as the legislature, from a motivational aspect, probably, you know, good motivation for us to understand that we need addressed legislatively quicker, sooner, rather than obviously later. The S J C will probably figure out a way to, way to do it. So, you know, I'm, of course, in favor of all, you know, forms of, you know, access to voting. So, you know, I would be encouraged to, you know, take many of the different routes and make different, different opportunities available to people, whether or not they want to do it through mail or if they want to do it in person, because that's what they're traditionally used to doing. Then we need to make it, make it safe for people to be able to do that.
Thank you, Senator Welch. And can we, counselors, can we also remind ourselves to mute ourselves as we are not speaking? Thank you, Counselor Walsh, for the question. It'd also be nice if we can include postage in that, Senator Lester. I don't know if that's what they did in South Korea, but that certainly would be nice considering the times we are in, senators. Next up, we have Counselor Whitfield, followed by Counselor Fann.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, senators, for joining us today. You guys are doing an amazing job. I really appreciate your work. My question is something that I haven't really heard mentioned. It's protections for the families of like medical workers and frontline workers as far as like financial support. If something were to happen to them, like if they were to pass away, is there any type of support for their families? Financially, some of these workers are young, where young families may not have the insurances and the coverages that they need for burial and even like education for their children. So has there been any mention of efforts to support them?
I suppose take a stab at that. You know, it's actually a good question. I think for, we have a weekly call, the Western Mass delegation with the local hospital leaders, you know, once a week to, to make sure that we're all on the same page, so to speak. But that would, that's actually, I think, a pretty good question for our conversation. We have, there have been focuses on, as you mentioned, frontline workers and their safety and bringing you home to their loved ones. I have a, my sister-in-law is a nurse at a emergency room in Brockton. And, you know, we think about that every day, that, you know, she goes to work and what happens when, when she comes home. So very good question. I would say that, you know, there have been efforts to try and secure, I think we're probably past it at this point, but some housing scenarios for frontline workers so they don't have to actually go home. I haven't seen much of that, whether some hospitals are providing that, I'm not sure. But I think we're unfortunately past that point now. I mean, anybody who's probably working in a hospital at this point has been subject to, you know, COVID-19 or at least been exposed to it. So, so, but that's a good question in terms of, you know, if someone were to pass away, what, what type of, you know, we did, there is hazard pay that has been increased. Our local hospitals have, you know, some are better at it than others, but increased the hazard pay for frontline workers. But in terms of, you know, insurance coverage, that's a good question. I don't know. I mean, I, there could be something out there, but I'm not, I'm not 100% sure about that.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Senator Lester, did you have a quick follow-up to that?
Yeah, just, I mean, I think, I mean, I think Jim and I speak with one voice on this and all of us in supporting the frontline health workers. Right now, it's largely a policy and a relationship between the employer and their employee. So as Senator Welch pointed out, you know, what the Bay State health policy is, what the, what the individual city or town E M T policy is, that's probably something that legislatively we might want to examine. I know one just pointed comparison is the New York City subway system, the MTA employees. For the New York City subway, it was announced that MTA workers who, you know, pass away as a result of COVID-19, their families would get a $500,000 life insurance policy. So there are some models, you know, that we can start to look at or, you know, examples of things happening in other places that we could incorporate.
Thank you very much. I just think about, sorry, Mr. President, I just think about the people with young families and young children and their education and their financial support, growing up without maybe one or both of their parents. So if you could please look into that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. We have Counselor Fann, followed by Counselor Curran.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question regarding the essential service business designation. Under the governor's executive order that he put out in late March and subsequently extended, essential service providers are the only businesses that can have in-person operations in the Commonwealth. And there's an extensive Exhibit A to that emergency order that defines in somewhat great detail what an essential service provider is. I've spoken to many businesses, some in Springfield, some not, some clients, some constituents, who don't clearly fall within that Exhibit A, but also don't clearly fall outside of Exhibit A. Some of those businesses have continued to maintain operations short of guidance from the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development. So what the state has done is they've created a essential service designation request form that the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development is supposed to review on a case-by-case basis and provide businesses with guidance as to whether or not their particular circumstances put them within the essential service designation. Universally, I haven't, I am not aware of a single business that submitted such a request that has heard back from the state. It's been complete radio silence from the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development. And it's put a lot of businesses in limbo in terms of what their vulnerability is for whether or not they can remain open safely as an essential service provider. And I'm just wondering whether either of the senators have dealt with this issue and have any insights into whether the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development will be issuing these determinations? It's been a really frustrating process for many people because the process is designed to provide clarity and it's not.
So either Senator Lester or Senator Welch?
I can take that quickly because it's kind of in our committee. So we're, so you're right, Counselor Fann, it's been a difficult process and they haven't always been terribly responsive. But if you have a discrete business or a specific case, you know, follow up with us and we can get you connected with Secretary Kenealy's office. Unfortunately, a lot of these in-between cases are being, the answer is often no, they have to stay closed. So sometimes businesses, I think, are cautious about trying, getting that as a definitive answer, which is part of it. But just, I think probably the best way to handle this is on a case- But just, I, I think probably the best way to handle this is on a case-by-case basis. If you haven't heard back, which I know is basically all of them haven't heard back, let us know and, and we can, we can follow up directly with the secretary. We, we, I, we talked to Secretary, I talk to Secretary Kenealy roughly once a week or so. So we can, we can certainly add this to the list that we, we go over with him.
I think that's, that's a good answer. And just as an update, my wife just informed me that I think the governor just announced that schools will be closed until, we plan to go back at the end of August. So I just wanted, in case you hadn't seen it, I hadn't seen it. My wife told me, I don't even know if it's true, to be honest, but she wouldn't tell me something that was.
Yeah, I'm sure it's true if she told you.
No, no, it's true. He just, the governor just announced that for daycare, that they're, they're shut down. Daycare's at the end of June and then schools out until next fall.
Thank you. Counselor Fann, did you have a follow-up or?
Yeah, just, no, and I appreciate that. And I will reach out about specific circumstances. It's, and I don't know what everybody else's experience is, but I'm not aware of anybody that I've dealt with who submitted the designation request, who's heard back one way or another, either affirmatively or in the negative.
We, we have, I, I want to be careful because it's specific cases, but we, we've had some manufacturers that were, that, that, you know, had some questions and were able to stay open after getting some guidance about, you know, about their specific manufacturing process. So you, you're right, they, they, it generally hasn't, you know, but with some appropriate follow-up, we, we can try to get them answers, so.
Great, thank you.
I would add, and maybe it's more of an aside to that, and it's, it's somewhat of a Pandora's box, but the issue of business interruption insurance, you know, as you talk about, you know, definition of who's essential and who isn't, and, you know, why is that business essential and mine isn't? But if businesses are closed, you know, many have tried to turn towards their business inter, business interruption insurance policies, which specifically, in most, if not all cases, specify that pandemics do not
That's right.
apply as an event, you know, for, for business interruption insurance. So that is an issue that's been being talked about quite a bit. I would say that some of the proposals that are out there right now would be very challenging to try and pass, you know, to basically retroactively go back and adjust everyone's policy to say, you know, you're now covered via a pandemic for your business to be closed. When you're talking about the entire world, you know, in our case, you know, well, just the entire country being affected. And as, as we know, insurance, the way insurance works, you know, you spread risk throughout different, different segments and you can't do that with a pandemic because it affects obviously everybody. So if we retroactively went back and tried to put a rider on or put, put that language in there, it would, you know, essentially possibly bankrupt the insurance industry because they wouldn't have enough, you know, funding and reserves available to be able to cover that all at once. So I do think there'll be other, you know, suggestions and other proposals that'll be out there to, to try and address that because, you know, it's certainly nobody's fault that their business is not open because of the pandemic. So we have to, we're going to have to figure something out.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Welch, and thank you, Counselor Fann. Love the fact that we're getting more comfortable with our Zoom meetings as I see your hat turned backwards, Counselor Fann. I, I just want to be mindful of the time.
I was going to let that go, but.
I just want to be mindful of the time. We are in our end. My hope is that, senators, you'll stay on until at least all of the councilors on the phone can ask you one question and then we can do the follow-ups outside and offline. So thank you so much. And if you have to go, then we'll certainly understand it. Counselor Curran.
My question is for Senator Lesser. Who, who is out here in Hampton County in charge of the response for the nursing homes? Who would be the administrator, administrator in DPH for Hampton County?
Yeah, great, great question, Sean. So I, I'm not sure if it's necessarily, conceptualize it as Hampton County specific. We've mostly been routing these through Mary Lou Sutter's, who's the governor's, you know, designee as the COVID response commander. And then there are National Guard units that are more regionally based that are being triaged and sent to these homes to do the testing and to do the follow-up. So the, the way it roughly works is there is a DPH epidemiologist who is assigned by region. So there is one assigned for Western Mass, but the resources are kind of being directed at a Boston. And then it's the local health, you know, health departments in each respective jurisdiction that are really on the ground coordinating that with DPH and the Guard. So in Springfield, that would be Commissioner Colton Harrison. In Long Island or East Long Island or Chickenby or wherever, it's the respective health departments. But if you have a specific home or there's an issue, they're not getting the response they need, they're not getting the support, you know, really let us know right away. Certainly if it's in the area of Springfield I have or, or Senator Welch or both.
No, that, that's, that's, that's very much appreciated. I mean, I think if there's anything that can be brought back to Beacon Hill and maybe Governor Baker is, perhaps to have a point person for that particular problem, at least in regards to nursing homes.
Yeah.
As it might be a little bit more efficient for the residents' families. And, and second, just a follow-up question. Are the nursing home workers, employees, are they being tested currently every day? And if not, how long do you think, is the state going to be able to ramp that up?
So back to the original point about testing capacity. And by the way, this is a regional equity issue because we need more testing capacity in Western Mass. You know, for example, the Bay State lab and Mercy have tremendous capacity. If they get the materials to do the testing locally, they are doing everything they can, but they're not getting the support and the resources from the state and federal levels to get the reagent kits, to get the swabs.
But, but are, are the nursing home, like employees, like the janitorial staff, the orderlies?
So frankly, right now, it's being triaged. It's, there is not universal testing for everyone who wants it.
So is there a plan or like, maybe, I don't know, a request to say, hey, the nursing home employees and frontline workers, they need to be tested like every day? Because they are the ones, as you know, that would be bringing this into the residents who are not mobile.
So. So the answer is I agree with you and we've been advocating for that. You know, and all the, the, the public health guidance is that you do iterative testing and you do universal testing and you have to do it as like, kind of like almost surveillance testing, to your point. You can't just do one test and then that's it. You've got to do tests multiple times a week in certain cases of the whole population, both patients and staff, to keep an eye on any potential infection. And, and right now, that is only happening at really the most, at the, at the nursing homes that they've identified as being the most severe, but it's not being done anywhere near the scale that we need.
Thank you.
Just, I would just add that unfortunately, it's been, been patchwork in terms of, you know, the type of testing that happens. And as, you know, we can all glean from, sadly, what's been happening is nursing homes are certainly the hotspots, you know, for, for COVID-19 when, because you're dealing with such a vulnerable, vulnerable population. And I would say, you know, it's been made pretty clear that, you know, Mary Lou Sutter's is, you know, I would say she is actually the point person for it. But I think, Sean, to your point, or Counselor Curran, to your point, it might be, that might be a good suggestion for us to, to bring up that there be a, a regional point person, so to speak, that would be responsible for, for Western Mass nursing homes or, you know, however they want.
Yeah, because, I mean, it is tough. I mean, all these rehabilitation clinics out in the Handen or East Long Island or whatnot, you know, on a Saturday afternoon, then who do they call? I mean, they, you know, they kind of need a, a local contact point. And so I, we appreciate your leadership and, and bringing it up to Ms. Sutter's.
Yeah, I would just say that she's identified and not, not only her, but, you know, she's communicated to us that the state has obviously identified nursing homes as priority number one, so to speak, of, you know, the type of facility or type of place that they need to watch very, very closely. And it just, sadly, it just doesn't seem, no matter whatever is done, doesn't necess, you know, it, it still has dramatic, dramatic effects. And it's really, you know, hard and difficult to watch. People can't visit their loved ones. You know, I have a friend whose, whose mom, he went and visited his mom, all he can do is knock on the window and wave to her. And it's just, it's, it's tough for everybody. So, but I just, I just hope that we can, we can, you know, get through this. But nursing homes are definitely, definitely high on the priority list of, of places that I think they would like to see more universal testing that can help us navigate through it.
Thank you, Counselor Curran. The only reason why I allowed you to ask so many follow-up questions is because I love seeing your background. It looks fairly familiar. Counselor Ramos, followed by Counselor Letterman. And then to our Senate delegation, we only have two more after that.
I thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, everyone. My question is related to the construction industry. As you know, the carpenters and the painters across Massachusetts pulled their workers from the field for a short period because of the, the, the concerns related to COVID. And the Massachusetts trades sent a letter to the governor requesting that all construction be shut down across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The reason for that being that there were studies out there that showed that the, the chance of, of, of being infected with COVID-19 were increased in construction sites because of the lack of access to warm water, et cetera, et cetera, running water. However, the governor failed to act on, on the, the construction and making a decision to shut down construction. So one of the concerns right now is that a lot of, a lot of contractors are facing deadlines and potentially penalties and, and delays because of COVID-19. So there's a bill in the House that was sponsored by, the lead sponsors are Representatives Mark and Donahue. It's a House bill, House Docket 5038. And it states that a construction contractor or subcontractor shall be immune from suit and civil liability for any damages allegedly related to construction delays. And there's a second part to that, that, that says that it shall be unlawful to file a civil action or for damages against any employee, organization, or union for advising their bargaining unit members of their right to refuse to work during COVID-19. It's getting a lot of support in the House and I was wondering if this would, if you, if you would support this in the Senate and whether or not you think this would, this would pass?
I guess I'll start, Eric. Not familiar with the language of the, the House Docket. I know that this issue has been a very difficult issue to, to try and manage through. And Paul Feeny, Senator Paul Feeny on our side is basically the, the Senate point person who sits on the same task force that, that Eric and I are on, that he gives us an update, you know, quite regularly. And unfortunately, when it comes to trying to get all the unions on the same page with this has been very, very difficult, as you can imagine, or as you know, Orlando. So the, you know, the issue that, that continues to come up is, you know, how do, how do you make it as universal as possible? So people are affected, or some people aren't affected more drastically than others. But, I mean, the language sounds, you know, pretty interesting. I would say that, you know, just from a technicality standpoint, standpoint, many of these pieces of legislation are being passed via executive order. You know, these things that we've done, you know, notwithstanding the, the medical liability legislation and the foreclosure legislation that, that went through, you know, pretty somewhat traditional legislative channels. But the governor does have great authority to be able to, to be able to issue guidance and be able to issue orders on that. So, you know, something that, that type of legislation might see a few hurdles along the way and people, legislators might want to change or add or, or massage it a little bit. You know, that, to me, sounds like it might be something that an executive order might be, might be, might be the better course of action for it.
Senator Lesser, did you have anything you wanted to add quickly to that?
Yeah, just, I mean, I, that specific bill I ha, I have to review. But the general issue, you know, I, you, you hope that people can get it kind of on the same page because there's right now a lot of, the, the, the different trades are not necessarily on the same page about what the policy should be. And also, it's not good to see the governor and the mayor, you know, the governor and the mayors in disagreement. So, you know, I agree with the general idea. We need to obviously keep people safe and there needs to be a uniform policy that people can plan around and that creates transparency for workers. So, you know, certainly, certainly engaged on the specific issue, but that, that language of that specific cause of action still need to review.
Thank you. Thank you, senators. Thank you, Counselor Ramos, Counselor Davila, followed by Counselor Brown, and then we'll end with Counselor Letterman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to Senator Welch and Senator Lesser for today's update and your work on this crisis. Before I ask my question, I want to put into perspective and give some context to my question briefly. Springfield is in fact the epicenter of Western Mass. We have, as of today, I believe, 832 cases in Springfield. And we are sure the number is much higher than that, probably reaching into the 900s. And if you look at the dispersment rate of COVID-19 cases throughout the city, most of them are either North End, downtown Mason Square, and parts of Lower Forest Park. And that is basically the dense populated areas and also the, where most of the minorities live throughout the city. We know that this virus is directly affecting harder and proportionally harder than other communities. And not only from language access, but also informational aspect, but also testing, coming back to testing. I do realize that test is an issue. I do realize that testing is an issue and, and testing is going to get us out of this outbreak. However, we've got to do the test. So what I'm suggesting to both of you, and maybe you could comment or bring it up to the higher, to the higher lengths, is to do home testing. It is my understanding that that's not fully being done. I know Springfield is doing contact tracing. I know they started out with the early first and those people who were infected, they do contact tracing. But if you send somebody home who's COVID-19 positive, now you're exposing the entire family to the virus. So I think that at home, testing is critical. I do believe that particularly for the hotspots throughout the city. And this is something that perhaps even the, I'm sure it's hard to make the suggestion, the National Guard could assist in doing, or even nursing students throughout the state. And I do believe there was talk before about relaxing some of the guidelines for students that the class is doing that because testing, testing, test is going to get us out of this outbreak. I would like to hear your thoughts and any other current work that has been done on the front.
I agree with you 100%. You know, in terms of how the testing gets, gets done, you know, certainly testing people in their homes would be, would be ideal and not having them go to, you know, hospital setting or even a, a drive-through setting. But, you know, we still have to, I, you know, in terms of the medical professionals, I let them, you know, really determine what the safest way is to do that. But it's really more, you know, the issue I think that we're facing and, or we're all facing is the lack of, of reliable testing. And until that, and that's sadly, it's not just the Massachusetts issue. It's not just, you know, a Springfield issue, Western Mass issue. That's an issue across, you know, the entire country. And depending on who you talk to, some people say that anybody can get a test if they want one. And I think we all know that that's not, that's, that is not true. So I agree with you. Hotspots and, and areas that are more dramatically affected than others need to be on the priority list for testing because, you know, that's why you're going to slow down the virus and, and ultimately stop it and beat it. So I agree with you 100, 100%. I would say, you know, following this pretty closely, I mean, you know, as we all are, you know, I would say that every day gets a little bit. you know, I would say that every day gets a little bit better in terms of, you know, the progress that the country is making on testing, but it's just not happening quick enough in, in a way that is, it seems to me sometimes, not only is there a lack of tests, but it's really just the dispersment and how things, there's no, there's no, it's just chaos, chaos out there, unfortunately. And I'm not just saying in Massachusetts, I'm saying from the federal government down. And of course, you have differing opinions on who's responsible for testing. Is it the local municipality? Should the local municipality be paying for testing kits? Should the state be paying for testing kits? And I think, you know, at least from where I come from, or the standpoint I come from, is that the federal government is the one with the resources that can get the tests done, get them, get them out to states, and then have them, you know, be dispersed to municipalities from there. So I agree with you 100%. I think, you know, most people, professionals that you, that you talk to say that without, you know, adequate and dependable testing, it's going to be hard to get us back to anywhere close to what, what we're used to. But I do think in those vulnerable populations that you speak of, testing is going to be critical moving forward to try and, to try and get us, get us on the right track and at least try and, you know, prevent any further tragedies.
Thank you, Senator Welch. We have 15 minutes before, or actually 10 minutes before Senator Lesser has another phone call at 1:00, and we have two counselors remaining. So Senator Lesser, if you wanted to add to that in 30 seconds, then that would be greatly appreciated, and then we can move on to the final two counselors.
I'll just add that, you know, the disparities, the racial and economic disparities in this are very, very important and something that needs to stay at the center of the policy response. And Counselor Davila alluded to that with the, you know, certainly the communities, when you look at the breakdown of where the impacts have been the most hard-hit. Testing will give us the data to be able to get those resources where they're needed most, but I think, you know, the lessons that we're already learning from this really need to be incorporated into the policy response moving forward.
Thank you, Senator Lesser. We have eight minutes remaining, so we have Counselor Brown, you will have four minutes, and Counselor Letterman, you'll have the remaining four minutes. So Counselor Brown, it's on you.
Thank you, President Harris, and thank you, Senator Welch and Senator Lesser for joining. Definitely appreciate all the work you guys are doing, working with your office continually with this epidemic, and you guys are doing a great job. Federally, I had made a call out to Richie Neal's office about the LLC, the sole proprietors and things like that. They didn't have those in play, but just last week, they just started, they just announced that now they're taking some of that stuff into consideration. So there are federally, the SBA is now taking a certain group that hadn't qualified for certain funding, they'll be able to get that. And also, we do have a certain area for any of my colleagues that kind of, if there's someone on a state level, as far as on a House level, I don't know if you got, we have a Department of Elderly Affairs, it's at One Ashburn Place, 617-727-7750. Denise Bradley, she's a scheduler, like, if you have anything as far as like certain issues, you can probably, if you need to get ahold of someone on a state level, I would probably get ahold out there. But once again, thank you for everything, everything you guys done. And on a lighter note, I'm no longer going to be a Patriots fan, I'm following Tom Brady.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Counselor Letterman, the show is yours. You have five minutes to ask a question and for the senators to respond, and then we'll close out. It's on you, Counselor Letterman.
Thanks, Mr. President, and thanks, senators, for being here and all you're doing. A question I had was actually looping back to unemployment insurance and the process for individuals to apply. Last week, we held a, or I held a virtual town hall, we had some good attendance, and one of the questions that was brought up was the fact that the unemployment assistance application is essentially exclusively available online now due to the numbers that that office is seeing, and that that online application is not fully accessible via smartphone and tablet. In other words, if you want to access the entire application, especially the communication aspects, once you enter the application, you actually have to be on a desktop or laptop computer, and that presents a lot of difficulties, especially for our constituents here in the city of Springfield. Many, the way that they access the internet is through smartphones and tablets because those are a little bit more affordable in many cases. And so I'm wondering what conversations might have been had recently with the unemployment office about how to upgrade that application website so that individuals can complete the application, which is desperately needed, via smartphones and tablets entirely.
I can, sorry?
That's all you.
All you. No, yeah, it's a very, very good point, Counselor Letterman, and there's been multiple access issues, that's one. Also, language issues are major. They've brought online multiple more languages, I believe now there's more than two dozen, and they're bringing more on. So we have been told that there's going to be a tech upgrade to allow for mobile, mobile devices and tablets, so we'll check in with you on the update on that, but it's absolutely a very important point, and it's one that's been flagged.
Thank you, Senator Lesser, and thank you, Counselor Letterman. I just want to thank all of you for joining us on this Zoom call. Thank you, senators, for giving us an hour and a half of your time. We greatly appreciate it. What I think we'll do is we'll probably make these check-ins monthly during COVID-19 so that we can touch base on the follow-up. So I appreciate you guys for joining, and thank you so much to my colleagues. I think we have 12 out of the 13, so we're almost at a full body, but great questions, and this certainly was useful for me, and I learned a lot, so thank you.